No matter where you are in the state, you are on the ancestral land of a tribal nation. As we began our day, we honor the land upon which we stand.
Thank you very much. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at tonight's agenda? Are there any objections or questions to the agenda? And if not, is there a motion to adopt? So, motion from Jen, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Joe. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. The agenda has been adopted. With that, we'll move into the superintendent's report.
All right, good afternoon, evening, everyone. We're gonna jump right to the superintendent's report. We're running a little bit behind. We'll get caught up when we start it. Thirty minutes later than normal. So thanks for your patience. We're gonna open up with our superstar, extraordinary athletic director, Mr. Joel Zimba. He knew I was talking about you when I say superstar. Come to do a fall update for our athletic teams.
I feel like we need to have like, you know, bull's wop on music here. That's like, if we're gonna have the athletic update, we need to really.
All right. Appreciate you all having me here. You know, it's, it's an exciting time for the districts I've run through the high school. You know, we've been fortunate to have lots of success in the fall and, and that continues essentially all of our teams. So just want to give a quick update. These are just some pictures from, from the fall up there. You know, we have our football team, volleyball team, multiple teams up there. Cross-country, tennis, soccer, girls' swimming, go hang girls' golf, so. Here's just not a read through them, but it just, the fact that there is so much out there just shows the great work that our student athletes and coaches are doing to support our programs. You can see boys cross-country, you know, forty-eight, forty-eight student athletes total. We had a third, what was it? All-conference runner-up, fourth place in sectionals, girls' cross-country, twenty-nine athletes, those are really good numbers too there. We had a state qualifier there, and state finished sixteen, second fastest time in this history of our, our school. Girls' golf, eleven student athletes, so that's, that's really good there in terms of numbers increasing. Multiple conference, team members, regionals, finished second there, finished fifth. For sectionals, and then girls' tennis, fifty-two athletes. And you can see all these awards up there, and individual made it to state, which was, which was awesome. So, just a quick highlight there, and then I think there's another slide as well, two more fall updates there. So, boy soccer, a hundred student athletes. So for that, you can see that we have four teams for boys. So those numbers are continuing to stay high, which is good, especially considering how diverse that program is. So making sure that we're supporting those students. We won regionals, we lost in, we lost Arrowhead in sectional semis. But you know, we've won multiple state titles previously, so can't win them all, which is, which is. Vibeball, fifty-six student athletes, won regionals, we lost in sectionals to Holman, they were really, really good, so. Girls really fought there. Girls swimming and diving, forty-three student athletes. Second place in Division One, multiple podium finishes in state, which is awesome. And then football, a hundred and fifty-seven student athletes. And Coach Riley's done a great job, continuing the legacy of Coach Richardson. And we made it, it's the furthest we've gone in a really long time. We lost in the Level Three to Sussex Hamilton, who had a great run as well too in state, so.
It's exciting to see that many participants and that much, that's a lot of, a lot of great energy. And two coaches of the year for our conference.
That's what I was gonna say. We had some coaching awards too, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah, two coaches of the year, and Coach Riley, and then Coach Waters, well, two women's women's. So, you know, and then that's multiple times that we've had that, Coach of the Year. And we also got, in terms of overall coaches in the country, gymnastics and boys soccer as well, they got awards as well too nationally, so.
Wow. How did the size of our program, like, boys soccer and girls volleyball, those seem rather large? Are those, they compared to other school districts in our area that our eyes, our size are pretty on par?
No, we'd be right in line with most of them. And those are, so a lot of times those are gonna be two sports, and sometimes you'll have three teams, sometimes you'll have four teams. So that really just means two JV two teams. We've historically always had two JV two teams for programs. You know, there will be some big A schools that, that only have one JV two team, for example. But for boy soccer, you'll normally see two. It's rare that you'll just see one relative to our school. But sometimes in volleyball, you can just get in a three, and then sometimes it's less about the numbers and just more about, it can be hard to be competitive at that point, so. And, and club sports, it impacts those numbers a lot too. A lot of kids unfortunately are excited to play club instead of high school sports, and that's a struggle that we continue to deal with. So, yeah, that's a whole conversation for all of my day.
Very exciting.
And then I think we have one for winter sports, and then one more slide. So that just is updating on winter athletics there. Just shows when the season started, all the sports we have going on. And then just, you know, in case you want to see our next competitions coming up, those are in the base there. And then you can see we've had really good starts in a lot of our winter sports as well too. Girls' basketball being undefeated, five in all-conference, boy basketball undefeated, two in all-conference. And then, you know, wrestling has gotten off to a great start. I know swimming, you know, they always do well as well too. Hockey, it's a tough sport, you know, we had a big coaches change, but, and we've been really good for a really long time, so. It just takes time, and we've lost a lot, a lot of seniors as well too. So, we'll be able to build on that from that. And our girls' hockey team still are co-op with the Natural Lynx. They've been really good historically, making it to state. So we'll see kind of what happens this year, but really exciting stuff. And dance has been competing in competitions, and they're really enjoying just the support that the district's giving them, so. Exciting stuff.
It is exciting. I appreciate all that you do to help facilitate this for our students. I mean, it's great to have these places to link in for, you know, engagement and feeling involved and just a great community to be part of. And I love seeing our students go on and continue to play after their time here. So it's been fun to watch all that you have instilled in them and helped send them off into the world with.
Yeah, I mean, I can do some quick math, over a quarter of our student body participated in WA Fall Athletics, which is.
Wow.
Spectacular. And I will remind the board that we built into the budget we passed, recognizing our coaches with a long overdue pay increase. Joel and I have already started to leverage in a few spots, those ratios we put in, for making sure we have adequate number of coaches to support the student athletes that are out of reach sport. And we got, we got some, we didn't do middle school today, but we've got some really good things going on in the sport while this went through.
Thank you for linking that back. I think it's important for us to see too. I mean, there's so many, this is such a huge point of contact for our kids, and then just the support that we can build in, you know, budgetarily to support that is, is important.
Well, we appreciate it, as always. Thanks, everybody.
Don't be a stranger.
Fill them up. So I just want to say on behalf of our, not just our, the district in totality, but our full community, you know, the accomplishments that our student athletes have are happening also because of great leadership in the athletic department. When you think about all the things that, the moving parts, you know, the, the transportation, the schedules, the reschedules, you know, the supervision of numerous, numerous coaches. Everybody wants playing time. And that's always, as the former athletic director, that was, that was always the thing that you, but you navigated with such grace. And also, just having high expectations for not just outcomes on the playing surface, but also the integrity of the game and integrity of what we put out there. And so, we want to give you a shout out for your leadership and what you've meant to the athletic department. And we hope you continue to bring to the athletic department for, for the foreseeable future. And also, you know, it is student athlete. And just a clear recognition that not just the participation, but our student athletes on the academic sense and student outcomes, you know, performing at a higher rate in our, in our district. And we know because there's a strong sense of belonging in the full community that they share with, with, with the building of the school and that's, that's the surprise. So, thank you for, you know, making sure that all of that comes alive, that keeping eligibility is not the bar. It's, that's an expectation, but you have, we have such a hard bar for academic performance as well as the performance on the, on the field surfaces. So, thank you for your leadership, and we continue to strive, and we'll, we'll see you on the court.
Appreciate it so much. Thank you all.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Speaking of transportation.
I guess that there is, well, a transition from Joel's work in the athletic department and my work in transportation, to Dr. thirty said, at least as far as I know, we don't get a whole lot of board traffic regarding drama going on in athletics, and I'm knocking on tables. But part, part of that, that is due to Joel's hard work, hiring the right coaches, and handling things like playing time at the coach and athletic director level. That it is, Joel does a really nice job running a well-oiled machine with lots of moving parts. And, and I, I think tonight's second update, transportation, not as well-oiled. And we've had a little board communication from our community reaching out. And Dr. thirty and I thought it was just a good time to just do a, a quick check-in as far as what's going on in the world of transportation. It does have big budget impacts down the road. And I know there has been a few hiccups along the way recently, and wanted to just see if the board had any questions and give all of you an update in terms of kind of where things are at. So, like I said, no perfect transition, but it's an operations and business night, so we thought this is the perfect spot to put it in. So just to remind the board, we had plans a, a year ago to shift back to double loops. We had elementary school starting part two early, the high school was getting on, we thought was too late. And we were kind of handcuffed when it came to winter weather, when we didn't even have the option to go a late start because of all the things that were going on with transportation. And we managed to pull that off. We managed to work with Badger Bus at the time to redo a schedule and get a guarantee from them that they could provide drivers to provide that service to us. We built it in the budget. It was a budget increase to do this, but we knew it was what was good for kids and what was good for our schools. And then we had a little road bump, a bump in the road here, where Badger lost the contract at MMSD, and in turn ended up selling their business to First Student. And that was out of our control at that point. They were the only service provider at that point in the process that we could work with. And we've been working with First Student since really early summer when that transition happened. Through the summer and the fall, we've been working with First Student staff on that transition, and it hasn't been perfect. And we knew it likely would not be, and really nothing in the world anymore in terms of transportation is perfect. There are always things that come up, but this, this has been another trying year. I wanted to just make sure we were transparent with the board in terms of how that's been going. So we have had some successes. We did transition back to double loop, and that was a big success. And we continue to make it better that we've been able to do that. We've had very isolated instances of actually being short drivers. And we're gonna give the board a little more information on what's, what that's looking like on a day-to-day basis. But we've had very few times that we've actually been down a driver and had to work with First Student on having another bus move back or inform families, hey, there's gonna be a change in plans today because we don't have a driver. But it is a day-to-day deal. We've worked on some routing efficiencies with the Badger core and high school move in terms of making that as the same as possible. And a big success, we just had in this room last week, our second session of VASV-led driver training, in particular around PBIS practices led by our own staff. And we're doing scaffolded learning for our drivers around essentially relationship-based behavior practices on a bus. And that's not, it's not an easy job. It's part of the reason, we'll transition to the next slide. Being a bus driver is a hard job. I don't think they're compensated very well. And you're driving a, you know, multiple-ton box around with sixty adolescents behind you. It's a, it is a difficult job.
When you put it like that.
It's, it's a difficult job. It really is. And we want to make sure we support them the best we can. So we did want to bring, kind of close this out and see if folks had questions. We wanted to talk about really growth areas or growing pains that we've had so far this year. And we're not alone. I know the board has certainly read in the paper, even area school districts and school districts nationally that have run into similar issues with their transportation provider. So, one big thing that is a nuisance currently for our schools that we are a long ways from getting solved, is we don't have the ability to charter school buses at our school. So we're having our own coaches drive, we're using district fans and having coaches drive. We're having to, we're having, we're having to actually get coach buses, the big buses, because we don't have yellow bus charters available, and field trips are tight. Where we have field trips that have to head, and if you want to take a yellow bus, happen in a window from about nine o'clock to about one-thirty, because they need every available driver back to run the route at their school. So that is a burden for our schools as well. We've also had some operational pickups, some of which have landed on board email in baskets. In particular, the two previous Mondays, not this Monday, but the two before, we had First Student reworking a routing to get some of our buses more on time to school. And failed, failed to communicate that to families two Mondays in a row, where we had buses show up ten minutes early, stop, students didn't get on, proceeding to the next bus stop, and left families in the village. And we apologize profusely on behalf of First Student, and certainly let them know our thoughts on this operational pickup. It's really had to do with them communicating with our schools and our team that this change was happening, and they did not. Two Mondays in a row. Did not happen this Monday. We are behind on part of First Student's contractual obligation to have GPS and student tracking. They had to retrofit the buses for the contract that they bought. And that has been very slow going. Michael Kell and I have weekly meetings with First Student where we continue to reiterate our concern on all the items I'm mentioning to the board tonight. We are hopeful that by third quarter, we will be able to start to roll out GPS tracking where parents will be able to download the map and actually see where the buses are. That was supposed to be in place in August. Part of the Badger contract that we removed before that purchase. So that's been, that's been much slower out of the gates than we thought. Advertising to recruit new drivers was very delayed in my opinion to start. You will notice that the district's even doing our part. It took us a while to get where we are. There is a bus parked in my school parking lot with a "We're hiring" sign out there right now. We put up some signage around the district, and I finally have started to see TV ads this weekend and some radio ads regarding First Student. But those, those, when we started to talk about driver need, in my opinion, were much slower than they should have been. It's December, they bought the contract in July. And they, they are not flush with drivers that, in my opinion, that they should have been sitting on their hands to see what was going to come in. Lastly, the, the office and managerial staff is under spam. They've had an opening for dispatcher since they bought the contract, and they've had some other changes on the office side that have, quite frankly, in my opinion, caused the domino effect or bullet number two on operational pickups, that they're just short-staffed in the Verona plus hub in general. And that is out of our control, but all we can continue to do is reiterate the times that we are unhappy with the level of service they're providing for. It's, it's a contract, they're providing a service for us. And there have been certainly times as well, we've been unhappy with how that's going. So we get a weekly update from First Student. I copied in the leadership letter, an example of that as kind of a prelude to tonight's presentation. And just wanted the board to answer more of that. We have a long way to go. In my opinion, get to a real stable place with drivers to drive yellow bus routes. So on the top there, we have forty-seven yellow bus drivers we need every day to run the two loops that we do. And as we, we have forty-seven routes. And we have, right now, twenty-six drivers assigned to routes that are local drivers, that are, that in many cases were former Badger bus employees. We, and we'll kind of work our way down that chart. We have twenty drivers any given day that are what First Student are referring to as our drivers. And those are drivers from Elvinir, Illinois, Tacoma, Washington, Seattle, Washington. Some of those drivers are still being used that were former coach drivers from Badger Bus that came along with the sale. So we have, we, we have an ongoing hiring need at First Student and nationally, but certainly for our district locally, before I feel like we're at the right spot as far as having drivers that live in Dane County saying, I work for First Student and are not either sleeping in a hotel or driving up here from Elvinir level. And, you know, I, I, we've seen some steady progress over the last couple of weeks with the increased advertising they got. Last week, they got eighteen applications. We've had weeks, three or four weeks ago, that they got a new girl. So that's been some hopeful progress as far as drivers applying to potentially be down the road a yellow bus driver. But I want to, want to just be fully transparent with the board. And many, many days, it feels like it's, it's, we're just kind of holding on to a, a level of service that should be a guarantee every day. And I'm here to answer questions. That was a lot on my behalf, but wanted the board to kind of hear what was going on behind the scenes with, with everything in transportation. Cool?
I have a couple of questions. The first, as you rightly called out, this is a contract.
It is.
Are we getting any reimbursement for months that First Student has not supplied the GPS tracking that I believe you paid a little extra for?
We just started to push on that. There is a, a parallel conversation going on right now. We're negotiating the cost to lease our own yellow bus because we are, we're heading in the direction, I, I'm not wanting to sit on my hands. So we are heading in the direction of, and this could be out as, as early as next week, putting tools in the hands of our coaches to get their own CBL license. And then we're heading in the direction of actually leasing our own two yellow buses that would be parked on our own property. That's one of the things, as I'm negotiating the lease, I'm continuing to remind First Student about their contract obligation, obligations on the first route. So it would be hard for us to quantify that in, because it wasn't outlined in the credit, the value of GPS tracking. They were disposed of too late. It, it also, if we ended up heading in the direction of sending this back code to RFP, I think we would actually have known to say that in many regard, First Student has failed to meet the, the obligations in the contract that they signed, and that's the thing that.
Yeah, just really quick, just wanted to clarify, just wish for the public and for the board, we say back out to RFP, just a reminder that our, that RFP was really with Badger Bus. We've never gone into contract negotiations with First Student, so. They bought Badger Bus, and I think, and also as I read some of the emails that have gone to the, to the board and has shared for us to take, there's some sense of a misunderstanding that we moved away from Badger Bus and intentionally went to RFP to look for another provider, which was not the case. We had a contract per the, the board, board's approval and sign off to do the budget for a contract with Badger Bus, and then Badger Bus was that bought.
Thank you for clarifying that, because I think I mentioned last week that that was something that had come up. It came up again this weekend, and again, it's just that, why aren't we using Badger Bus? They, we didn't have trouble. Badger Bus does not exist. They were, they were purchased, so yes, we, I just, I feel like Badger Bus is this, they should feel pleased about how much good they're your trust.
Sorry, go ahead. Oh, sorry, I just had one more question. Before I do, I did, I did just want to give kudos to Michael account. I know my kiddo was one of the ones that was left waiting at her bus stop. And because our bus driver is highly efficient and wonderful. And he always does such a great job communicating with empathy and with professionalism, so I really appreciate Michael. My second question was, I know unemployment rates in Dane County are actually rather low, which exacerbates this scenario. Is there any, I guess this is maybe kind of an existential question. Is there any, like, state programs that take underemployed individuals and help them train for this? Or is there anything our community could be doing short of getting, like, I had a week where I was like, I'm gonna get my CBL license. And I was like, that's really big leap. So like, is there anything our community can be doing short of that to support the efforts that this school district is, is taking, even though this is not our contract to stay?
Yeah, you know, I would say you are, you are one hundred percent correct. And we had this conversation with First Student on a weekly basis. They're our, they're a nationwide company, so there are areas of our country that they are running into driver shortages like this, where the unemployment rate is a little bit higher, and they're finding more people applying for these positions. So Dane County is a really tough market. And as I mentioned before, these are also very unique jobs. You work a split shift to start with, a six AM to nine AM. Middle of your day is gone, and then you're back going one-thirty to four. And it takes a unique person who's willing to take on the responsibility of putting, you know, all those little ones or high doors on a bus, and having your responsibility for them on a daily basis. We've continued to push on at First Student, and I will bring that as another area that potentially has them as a pillar. Right now, they're doing a compensation study that they are actually bringing in some of their nationwide people to survey folks in this area around what is, what are the, you know, preventative factors that are keeping people from applying for these positions? I, I think as, in general, they are reluctant to head in the direction of of exploring more in the, in the way of compensation. And I think, plus right, the Badger contract, and now First Student, drivers have seen like a four to five hour an hour pay increase over the last two years. There's still a signing bonus, and they're aware of kind of an arms race that could happen, that may not give them anything. That if they decide, we're gonna increase driver pay three dollars an hour in the hopes of getting more applicants, they're not convinced that we'll do it, number one. And number two, all the other area providers would then have to respond to that pay increase, and they aren't convinced that that would do anything but add costs to the people that are, that are providing the service for us. So there, I do believe that they genuinely are not interested in twenty borrowed drivers on the road. And it's on them for the multi-million dollar contract that they, that they're holding of ours to solve this issue, and we are very willing partners to help them with that.
So, here's my question. We're not the only school district that First Student is servicing in Dane County. We're not the only school district that is having extreme problems with First Student. How are they prioritizing hiring for our district? Like, you know what I mean? Like, it's the same market? Are they pulling against each other? Like, did we see a delay in them advertising because they were prioritizing hiring for MMSD, or?
No, I mean, quite frankly, a First Student ad for MMSD is, is still beneficial for us. I think you would, I, I believe applied through their nationwide website, and eventually are directed for the area you'd like to drive in. And the, you know, Madison had a much more difficult time to start the school year than we did. I feel fortunate that we stayed on double loops and we had drivers every day. Other school districts did not have that. What they're telling me is that once they get a driver in the pool, that is where they work with the individual driver on where they'd like to drive. So they'll work with them on that. We've been fortunate that we're picking up, I think a lot of people that live on either the west side of Dane County. I, I think if you want to drive for First Student, they're somewhere else, or in Barderville. Um, I, I think if you want to drive for First Student, if you live somewhere else, um, Orum, Barterville, uh, you're in for a lot. Um, and have had better luck keeping and retaining the drivers that we had from Badger, um, than I think of the other districts First Student serves. Um, and so we have not been forced, you know, and Dr. Clarity was clear, uh, and we were clear with them when they bought this contract. Uh, we were not headed back in the direction of triple loops and change bus schedules at all costs. Um, and that's, I think, part of the reason we still have borrow drivers sitting with us, that they know it was an expectation that. Uh, if they were gonna be our transportation provider, uh, we weren't budgeting on that because we needed kids. Anything else on transportation? It is a, it, it's a, it is a fun little deal. Uh, getting a couple thousand students to and home, uh, with all of this going on behind the scenes. Uh, we are certainly hopeful, uh, the advertising applicants that have uh, dropped in lately. Uh, will lead us to a little bit more stability in the future.
And the trainings that the district is doing. I just appreciate that with all of that, it's still meaningful for our students to have. Positive experiences and for our drivers to also have positive experiences with students, that is still also being held as valuable when there's lots of.
We, uh, we, 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 we even work on, uh, you know, PBIS-based language that students might hear in their classroom. That they're hearing from our bus drivers. Uh, the, the last session, they worked on um, nonverbal cues to be direct. And uh, signs that even teachers use uh, in classrooms to continue their work instead of uh, getting them in, in, in sparring on, on the bus.
I really appreciate the communication that you provided to families. Um, as if you're a, a working parent who's put their kid out the door. And hope that they get to school on the bus, this is a huge deal, and I just feel like you, you addressed their concerns. I mean, like, you responded. In an empathetic way, um, and so then appreciative of that. I know that a lot of these things are out of our control as a district, um. It probably doesn't make parents feel better that it's out of our control, but it's been um. An unfortunate situation that I feel like has been handled by the district as, as well as um, as we can, and hopefully First Student will.
Yes. Okay, are we ready to talk a little budget? Any more questions on transportation?
All right, um, let's move to O E six.
You can go, Dr. Clarity. All right, um, here we said first board meeting in December. Uh, I communicated with the board uh, late last week that uh, we were still putting the, uh, we were still waiting for our auditors. Uh, to pull the draft stamp off the audit that all of you now uh, have in board docs and is in perfect line with O E six. It's actually one of our uh, central pieces of evidence in O E six. Um, and this is the perfect time to just go through um, highlights in terms of what ha- what we saw. Uh, or heard in terms of the rather large document that is our external audit. Um, so whereas you have, if you can go through the, the presentation on what the audit is, what the findings were, and what our next steps are, and then we'll dig into. O E seven, right?
Thank you, Chad. And um, first thing I want to do though is I want to shout and say thank you to some of the folks. In BAST who helped out with this, uh, starting with Rochelle Hades staff in the payroll area, because they. They have just applied on the detail for our actuarial reports, like most of all, uh, Teresa, she's our district accountant. And over, we probably started the audit, even though it was just finally finished. We started in June, so uh, between her and I, there's been hundreds of hours and hundreds of pieces of communication. Between the auditors and, and us, so a big shout out to Teresa for her. Her uh, patience and understanding of them to what we need. So, anyway, um. When we get out of this, what is an audit? Well, it's um, it's basically, basically an examination of uh, the financial statements of a school district. To ensure that they clearly and accurately present the transactions they claim to that. Um, in other words, it's uh, you know, we have the evidence to support that, what we're uh, what we're saying. Our, our financial statements, now I know this exists, there's the evidence to support, but what we are, what we are doing. Uh, there's an assessment of the accounting principles, um, our internal control, uh, sorry, our internal controls, including segregation duties. And then the other um, significant estimates that are made by, by staff, and we're talking about rest, that's mostly uh. The actuarial reports for the whole path of retirement. It isn't really designed to catch all the small, all the things. Since it's looking at just a test basis, so just a sample of that, it doesn't necessarily. Get all of the error or wrong that's material to our um, financial statements. Um, but what we're looking for here is the auditor, they're gonna give us an opinion on what they, what they think. Of, of how we're doing, and the most important word we're looking for is unqualified, which sounds fine. Uh, but another way to say it is clean. I think our owners call it unmodified, though. So we're looking for a clean audit report. That just basically says that it's free of material misstatements. And it uh, conforms with GAAP, the generally accepted accounting principles. And it fairly represents the financial position and health of the district, or that specific. And finally, it's required, yeah. So it's, it's a good idea to do it, but it's also, we also have. So, um. There are a few types of audits that school districts go through. Uh, the first one of this year is the annual financial audit, and that's what we're gonna be talking about tonight, and that's what we usually refer to as the audit. There are a couple other audits that we are subject to, uh, one of which is the single audit, and the second one is the membership audit. Now, the single audit is for any time we have um, federal revenue greater than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in one year. That's every year for, for our school district, so we're always subject to the single audit. Um. For a change in procedure this year, our auditor. Um, they used to do the single audit over the course of summer, and I'm sorry, the, the regular financial audit over the course of the. Over, over the fall, and then sometime in the spring, late spring, they would do the single audit. This year, they combined both of them, and now both the single audit and the financial audit are, are done at this time. It's nice that we do everything all, um, in a timeframe for us, so now, over the spring, we will get another. Couple hundred requests from the audit, it's more, more information. So, um, the, the third, our third audit, there is the membership audit, and we get that, we're supposed to get that once every four years, but it's just the. Top of the students, where your auditors are supposed to come and shine our, our student on the third Friday and see how, how that turned out. Um, there are a few auditors, or there's several auditors in the Madison area that works with DPIs. Because DPI has to approve all the auditors that are out there, so they uh. They know that auditors will understand the school finances. But um, one of the important things is the very last point, like we have up there, is we are gonna go to RFP, or go to RFP this spring. Um, we've been working with CLA for the last five years. We had a three-year contract and that extended for two years, so it extended right after Teresa and I started, because we started within a couple weeks of each other. And uh, didn't know if we'd have time to get our, our, our P going over, still trying to figure out where, where everything is in the district. So, uh, Teresa and I are gonna do, over the next couple of weeks, we're gonna be working on doing that RFP. Now, finally, for uh, the next slide, how do we do? Well, good news is we have clean audit. So, um, that's exactly what we were hoping for. They, uh, there's no compliance matters we could go into. There's no internal, internal control matters that, that they know of. Um, they did list a couple growth areas, as we will call them, one of which is considered a finding, and the other which is considered a recommendation. Um, the first one that's listed up here is the recommendation, and that's the journal entry review process. This is actually similar to what we had last year, right? Because last year, um. What they had written up said that the uh, district accountant had the ability to make journal entries and shouldn't be doing that, so we cut that off. The one I saw, the, the, um, recommendation came out in there, and I said, well, should there be two hundred ninety journal entries, and we have a single one? She's like, oh, no, we weren't talking about that, we were talking about the ones that eat nicks. And he only did like two. I, I did about a dozen. Wasn't turn that, second course, we are all at the end of the year while uploading my data to DPI, because I have to get the data cleaned up. But what they want now is for Teresa and I to look at them together, or find a way to do them, and then they would have to come to Chad for reading. But in, in the future, I'll take Teresa to do all of the journal entries, I won't do anymore. So Teresa will do them, and then Pete will get eyes on them and approve.
Yeah, got it, that's.
So we're hoping this isn't a bullet next year.
Right.
It should not, so, um, and then the second one is uh, finding from the single audit. And actually, remember when I mentioned the single audit was usually done in the spring? This was actually something that they had brought up to us in the spring. Um, what is, is, is uh, check for suspension and bar. So when we're purchasing anything over ten thousand dollars. Um, and if we're using federal funds, in this case, they want us to look at the SAM dot gov website, where it lists. Vendors out there that have government contracts or that are eligible to have government contracts, and they had asked. Like, last April, when they had come up with this one, are you guys checking SAM dot gov? I said, oh, I don't know. You can do that, I'm like, okay, well, that, yeah, notation for, for last year. So, and then the day after that, um, Michael Account and I updated our O E six purchasing form. Said, okay, let's start looking for SAM dot gov, and ever since then, we started doing that. It ends up being a finding on this audit, though, because by the time we rolled it out in April or May. Almost the whole school year is done, twenty two, twenty three, so it's just basically because of the time issue. So it's, it's fixed. If you go through the ninety-seven page audit and find that in there, it'll say that the district actually fixed it a while ago, but. Um, since it's, since the majority of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year wasn't in place, then it's a mouth case, as a located. Okay, uh, and then uh, finally, um, the audit does relate to O E six. And we're gonna go into the, a lot of detail on O E six here, I'm not sure if you wanna cover this one, Chad, or if I.
Yeah, I think it's a good segue. Um, so, um, in particular, on O E six, we pulled out uh, six point two and six point three. Point nine and six ten are all places that what Pete just went through. Records the policy, so we just pulled that out on a slide, uh, so uh, the board is aware of that. Um, and uh, we wanted to go through uh, our results of O E six, unless there are questions. Uh, about the results of the audit. We also attached in board docs, uh, the PowerPoint that the auditors sent us. Uh, if we had them in to go through the results of the audits, the board would see that, and, and the full audit posted on our website. For public transparency and attached it in board docs for all of you today. Questions on the audit? Okay, it is a credit to uh, Pete, Teresa, uh, Adrian, and our uh, small, what might be finance team. For all the work that it, it goes into that. And not just the work that goes into the audit. The work that goes on all year to make sure that we're compliant when it comes to the audit. Uh, and I think it's, that, that is certainly pertinent when we talk about uh, O E six and financial administration. So Dr. C is on, you're okay with us, we continue to roll through this. Um, we, I, I think can make a relative short work of this. Um, I, um, as I, I, I lead in, again, wanted to thank uh, Pete and our uh, business and finance team for. Uh, all the work that went into uh, putting the O E six document together, hundreds of pages of evidence again. Uh, but just like I told the board last year, um, there are um, processes that resulted in the board's policy. Uh, that made this a better and tighter run organization on the finance side. Um, and uh, there even Pete mentioning, we made an edit to our purchasing approval form. To be in compliance with the federal government. That didn't exist three years ago, uh, because we didn't have a, a board policy that said. If you're spending over ten thousand dollars, um, prove that you did some competitive pricing, uh, and. Prove that it's either bid or part of a purchasing contract, um, and we do that now, and that's a result of board policy. Uh, and the board telling us this is how they wanted, uh, you, all of you wanted our uh, organization wrong. Um, so we do, we're very proud of the fact that we, uh, we believe we've met uh, um, all of the indicators as compliant. And I will go through this, I mean, relatively quick fashion, and if the board has any questions at all, uh, please don't hesitate to ask. Uh, so, six one, uh, in general, uh, the superintendent assures that we meet payroll. And take care of all legitimate, legitimate debts. Um, we have all kinds of payroll calendaring. Uh, screenshots from WRS, screenshots from the federal government, uh, and uh, had uh, no complaint to the board. Uh, in terms of us not meeting our long-range debt obligations, so we did pay our bills. Um, and all of that detailed in evidence is six point one. Six point two, um, the superintendent will ensure that all non-bid purchases, um, are um, comparative pricing. Uh, and we've actually made a, a continuous improvement on how we do that, so, uh. Michael, we should have Michael here tonight to receive some sort of O E six and transportation order. Uh, um, we, we actually redid uh, the way that we are tracking uh, our budget holders. Making purchases of over ten thousand dollars, um, and uh, and that's part of O E six. Michael, we did that uh, with something called a JAP one, which is a workflow document that hits Pete's desk with all kinds of evidence. Uh, that the time it gets there for Pete to approve it. Um, so we feel very good about the fact that, um, there was not a purchase of over ten thousand dollars. Uh, that didn't get shopped, um, to guarantee competitive pricing. Six point three, anything that we spend over two hundred fifty thousand dollars, the board approved. Uh, and again, that's a new process with us having O E six, um, where we type up a consent memo and the board gets eyes on. Uh, anything that uh, was a purchase of over two hundred fifty thousand dollars, we included that. Uh, um, all of the, um, the board agenda items, uh, as evidence for the board, as we went through that all last year. Uh, that we have an audit, so it will point that at financial auditor, um, and they will provide an opinion, uh, that. The board gets to see, and we post publicly. Six point five, we'll make reasonable efforts to collect funds due to the district. Um, and that uh, has to do um, both with uh, all funds due from the state and federal government. Uh, it's collected on schedule, and that's a lot of Pete's work, uh, to make sure we're handing in the appropriate uh, documents to get reversion of federal government. Uh, and then funds due to us, um, that we have mechanisms in place in each department. Uh, to track down uh, money that is due to the district, and we provided evidence for that for the board. Six point six, the superintendent will be, uh, complete an actual financial recourse by fund. Uh, and that is, uh, again, a, a big piece of what happened to, uh, to their audit that all of you just, uh, had access to. Six point seven, the superintendent shall publish a financial condition, uh, statement annually, and we do do that. Uh, we have an annual audit that's posted to the website, that's the two evidence, uh, the annual meeting booklets. Published ten days prior to our annual meeting, uh, and we're proud of the progress we've made with the, the quality of that product. Um, and that, um, our fund balance has to be above ten percent, and we've talked in great detail about the progress, progress we've made. In terms of, um, uh, our overall fund balance related to our budget. Six eight, uh, the superintendent can't expend more funds than received in any given year, and we demonstrated that through the audit. Uh, in our annual budget. Six nine, the superintendent can't debt our own organization. Uh, so, um, no short or long-term financial uh, obligations. Uh, we just had our previous board meeting, I think Meredith decided to file a whole piece of paperwork on our open line of credit. Uh, and that is that policy right there. Pete can't go down to the bank and take out a loan, or Dr. Clarity, uh, the board has to sign off on it. Uh, and the external auditors, uh, went through and found that that was the case again this year. Six ten, we can't transfer money from one dedicated fund to another, that requires a board vote. We did that a couple of times last year, there's certainly the possibility, uh, that sometime this year, we would have an amended budget. Uh, that the board would have to sign off on. We can't do that, the board would have to do it. And we included the evidence, uh, in accordance. Uh, the superintendent may not uh, allow um, any required reports to be overdue or inaccurate. Um, lots of screenshots from uh, places that we are paying bills, DPI reports, um, our auditor statements. Um, and the fact that the, our board has not been notified by the federal or state agencies that, uh, we haven't. Uh, complied with any of the reporting requirements that they're upping. Six twelve, superintendent may not receive or process. Six twelve, superintendent may not receive or process or express funds under controls that are insufficient under accounting principles in the PNA, uh that is, uh, that's one of the the big pieces that uh they look for when they do the audit. And to explain, you had a couple of growth areas that I thought came back, uh very. I think we have a couple other things going on tonight, so we want to do that rather last week, um, but we are certainly geared to answer questions of the board.
I think we talked about this last year, how this one feels fairly checkboxy, you know, some of the OEs, we have such interesting almost subjective-like conversation, but this, and and even given that, the thoroughness to the evidence is just still so appreciated that I I feel there could be probably ways that you could skim it down and, but it just is so helpful to just see the full scope of transparency, not only for our sake, but then, right, that this is available for others to see and to just know that we're following policy and that you're providing ample documentation as to why these are green checkboxes along the way.
Yeah, Jen, I I I do believe that this policy more than um potentially any other, maybe OE four, uh that this is a policy that uh is around us building systems of accountability, uh that uh our day-to-day work, even India, in the, you know, business and finance office, we are churning through it in the back of our mind, knowing this is going to be evidence for next year, and it's the right one. Um, prior to this board policy, you really just had the audit uh and got a budget book through on an annual basis, and some of the other things uh that we highlighted in policy um could have slipped through the cracks because you weren't necessarily tracking the evidence on an annual basis, so we actually, we welcome it, uh even if you feel like it's um a a a big pile of uh like evidence that that, I I don't know, I almost got the vibe that you think it's like busy work for us. It is not, it's a necessary evil of making sure that we are running a ship uh in the basement of central office, so it's critical.
Yeah, and again, more so for even us, but to the broader community, and there's literally, we are not trying to cover high anything financial, I mean, down to a cent on these various documents, so, yeah.
A public check for the street um that goes in board docs, the audit we post, the budget we post, um, and uh all of you are approving major purchases, so it is as transparent as we can possibly make.
Yeah, I have the same sense as Jen did about, you know, this is a huge amount of evidence, is this just busy work for you? It is actually hugely important to, you know, and just when I, I mean, I did scan through a hundred and eighty-eight pages, and just to see all of this information is here, this is the, this is the um transparency that I think is critical, and I appreciate all of the systems, again, that you've put into place as a result of our policies, um, you know, it's been only it's only been two years. Feels like an eternity, but it's really a huge amount of work, too, of accomplished in two and a half years with the processes that um had to be created in order to accommodate this type of collection, so thank you.
No. All right, are there no other questions from the board? Is there a motion from the board to approve OE six as presented? Motion from John, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Nicole, um, we are officially all in favor, and we'll hold on a second. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the board about um, all right, moving, um, about OE six? Hearing none, I think we are ready to move to a vote, all in favor signify with aye. Aye, any opposed? OE six is approved as presented, thank you very much.
Incompliant.
Incompliant, yes.
Without journal, no journal entry.
Yeah, that's right.
Jen will remember. How do you know this?
I said that, Dr. Clarity, in some regards, do you want uh a growth period when you're you're paying for an auditor to go through all of your processes?
Right.
Uh, um, not the same one, three years in a row.
For just rearranged, like a shell game.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Then I'll close the superintendent's report, I'm gonna turn it over to board action.
Okay, so for board action, um, just to kind of follow up from our workshop, we have some policy readings for policies, we have two readings that are required, so we can do our first reading tonight, and then our second reading um will be on the eighteenth, and we can vote at that time.
So really, our agenda should just be reading of, and the approval would be on the eighteen.
Yes, on the eighteen, and that'll be the second reading and the board vote.
Got it.
Um, so per workshop, um, the board has um proposed that we change uh policy or OE eight to include um um a subpart OE eight point thirteen, that would read, the superintendent will ensure the board is appropriately included and effectively represented in district communications. And then a second OE eight point one four, the superintendent will ensure the board has the necessary staff and administrative support to successfully meet its governing commitments and responsibilities. Does that accurately capture our workshop work? Okay, moving on to OE ten, the board would like to change the policy um of ten point one to read the superintendent will maintain a climate that is characterized by support and encouragement for student success, including the physical, nutritional, mental, and emotional health of all students. Does that capture our reading from the workshop?
Yeah.
Okay. Finally, we would like to modify our certification language, and this is, since it is not a policy, we can vote on it tonight.
Okay.
Um, the policy certification language will be achieving reasonable progress, achieving reasonable progress with exceptions, so no change from what's existing, but there will be reasonable progress not yet achieved, and then the final will be adding a capacity building date. Is there a motion to approve the change in certification language?
So moved.
There is a motion from Jen, is there a second?
Sure.
Second from John, all in favor of changing the certification language to um what was stated, signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It has officially been changed, so moving forward, we can adopt new certification language. Thank you very much. Um, general board update, again, we have just uh signatures can be circulated at this point, so for anyone who is um intending to run, um, that date is is upon us, and papers are due on January second, so that's a little bit foreshadowing a future agenda. Corby, did you have a board update that you wanted to give, or did you want to wait till?
Sure, sure, two of them, uh tomorrow, tomorrow night, Tuesday, we have the gender support inclusion committee meeting four thirty to five thirty here, same building, um, library, and then uh this Thursday we'll be speaking to the Advent students, I'll be speaking to them at uh Savannah Oaks regarding uh educational journey, overcoming obstacles. And uh.
Interesting, thank you, Corby, we appreciate you doing that, thank you.
Yes, um, I just wanted to update the board on last board meeting, I was tardy for what was painfully then called one of the best conversations we have had, so that was a bummer.
Did we mention how late the conversation?
Yeah, a couple times, just checking. But uh I was attending a kind of group meeting around the Fitchburg Teen Center, um, which was really exciting because the uh teen center would actually serve uh the majority of students that that center would serve are Verona area school district students. Um, so, um, very much in line with what our hopes and goals are for the Verona area school, um, being that we are an extended community, and we also want to acknowledge and respect um communities from which students come. Um, making sure that they feel connected to their neighborhoods, making sure that they feel connected to the broader community. Um, so it was really cool to hear that conversation, and there was even a a map of the Verona area school district that was displayed throughout the presentation. So very excited that we were able to have um board representation, and thank you to my fellow board members for covering and having forum so that um one of us could be in attendance for that, um, and I'm super excited to hear about the way in which uh the Fitchburg government and city council are really invested, the mayor was there, um, people from different organizations around Dink County were there, um, and the amount of investment, and that was super cool, so just wanted to mention that as well.
Thank you for the update. Anything else from the board? If not, we'll move on to public comment. Hearing none, um, we can move to superintendent consent consent agenda, um, if everyone had a chance to take a look. Any questions? Hearing none, superintendent consent agenda has been approved as presented. Next is board consent agenda, take a look, any questions? Hearing none, the board consent agenda has been approved as presented. Move on to future agenda items, our next board meeting will be on the eighteenth and um January second, also, again, keep in mind, we have uh Wasbe Conference from the seventeenth to the nineteenth in January. And with that, um.
Just to start, oh, yeah, I think I think you said then after that January second, January second is that filing deadline, the next meeting after that is, hey.
Thank you, I did say that. Have meetings all the time, it only feels that way. Um, with that, we'll adjourn to close session under Wisconsin statute point nineteen, point eight-five, sub one, sub C to consider employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility regarding superintendent evaluation, is there a motion? Motion from Nicole, is there a second?
Sure.
Second from John, all in favor, we'll go with roll call vote, starting with Joe.
Aye.
Corby.
Aye.
Jen.
Hi, Nicole.
Hi.
John.
Yeah.
I'm aye as well, we are officially adjourned to close session, thank you very much, um, let's take just a couple quick minutes. Do we want to stay in this room, or do we want to move back to the small room, because it's gonna be just conversation, and this is such a.
Do we?